Jim, can you hear anything?
No, I can't.
Okay. Yeah, me neither.
Maybe they haven't started the audio yet.
I am. I emailed Mary Ellen.
And someone's also done a chat.
Someone did a chat.
Right, to let them know that we don't have audio.
Okay.
Because usually what happens is whoever hosting it tells everyone to mute. Oh, so Craig just said Bob Markle's mic is on mute.
Hey, we're good now, Greg?
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
I haven't muted as much as I can.
This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen July 7, 2020, being held through Zoom as recommended by the governor and the emergency declaration of March 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The, is anyone recording the meeting besides the Board of Selectmen? All right, seeing none. The first item on the agenda, do we have any meeting minutes this evening? No meeting minutes, okay. The first item on the agenda is a discussion of the school committee vacancy created by the resignation of Heather Zanetti. This has to be filled within 30 days from the point of her resignation. And it's generally filled, is filled by a joint meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and the remaining member of the Hampton Regional School Committee. The chairman of the Wilbraham, Hampton Wilbraham Regional School District contacted me and asked if we would consider me having a joint meeting with them so that they could interview the candidate and discuss the candidate and possibly cast a vote as well. I told him I would check with the board on that, but I didn't think it was, probably would happen because I don't believe that's what the agreement is. And also, he wanted to also, I thought was magnanimous of him that he expressed his regret that Mrs. Vale was not received in the way she should have been received when she was appointed by the Hampton Selectmen. And he said that some of his members felt that her appointment was not legitimate the way it was done. And of course, the agreement specifically says that each, the selectmen of each town and the remaining school committee members from that town will appoint the new member, but it has to be done within 30 days. So Heather's resignation was July, a week ago. So about seven days ago. We'll get the exact date. But we will entertain applications from persons who are interested. We do have two applicants right now. Other people are certainly, you know, encouraged to come forward. And we, so at the board, I'd like to set a date when we would interview those persons and make a point, make point of vacancy.
I think the, I think the 20th would be the proper date. That's within the 30 days and gives people enough time to submit interest. I also followed up on your, your email and contacted Mr. Kirin as well. And he does agree that it's strictly the Hampton representatives. Just like they did back when Peter Solano resigned, just the Wilbraham representatives met with the Wilbraham Board of Selectmen. It was posted because they represent a quorum, just by being there. I think, looking back, part of the maybe ambiguity was the fact, and I think Craig actually posted the, the verbiage online, that it said the school committee and the selectmen of the town. And it's clear that rereading it, "of the town," referred to both groups, but it could have been perhaps interpreted by someone who didn't understand the background, oh, just the selectmen of the town. No, there's no dispute. It's the school committee members from that town and that Board of Selectmen. So I'd entertain, you know, that we would meet with Maura on the 20th, interview the candidates, and then if it's real with the board, we would vote that night, the four of us.
I, I think his confusion came in though is because when, when Mary Ellen resigned from the committee, there was a posting of, at the Wilbraham Regional School that the Wilbraham Regional School District and the Hampton Board of Selectmen would meet to fill the vacancy.
And I think that was part of that confusion when I looked at the verbiage.
And then you had, you had to appoint that, prior to that because of the 30 days and then this would happen.
I, I think that historically, though, you're absolutely right, John. It has been, as, as both of you have said, the reading of the contract, it says, it's a selectman of the town from which the former member comes. So that does not mean all selectmen or all school committee people or anybody. It just, you know, the reading is, and the left comma is really what, what provides it, but.
What's that called? Oxford comma, something like that.
Something like that. The other, I think also that they have, in Wilbraham have appointed people using the same procedure. When Thompson went on.
Chris Larno, exactly.
When Chris Larno, that was how the procedure was used. So I think we.
I think we're on firm ground here.
Yeah.
History and what we should do.
So firstly, and secondly, I'd like to thank Heather for her service, you know, a loss. We're so happy to have people that step up and volunteer and it takes a lot of time away from, from family life. And we're appreciative of her time.
So it'll be July 20th, I don't think, on the agenda. If people who are interested, please submit their application to the Board of Selectmen or, or they're interested in Board of Selectmen, we'll review them, interview President on July 20th and we'll take a vote on that day. All right, the next item on the agenda is a discussion of the action ambulance contract issues. Is anyone from the fire department on?
I'm not seeing anyone. We have 26 participants, so they're. Let's see. Yeah.
Is there anyone from the fire department on? What? Pat, I'm interested, I'm interested to know, under what authority did the fire department think that they could break their own contract with Action Ambulance?
I believe the chief is on, and that would be a question for him.
Can you? Give a damn. They should know better.
Okay, I have a, I guess it's, yeah, Pat is on.
Did you hear my question, Pat? Are you representing the fire department or are you just on like that?
I was on as a viewer tonight. I believe the chief is on and that's a conversation directly for him.
Is he on?
He should be.
Okay, if the chief is on, I'm interested to know, under what authority did you feel that you could write your own contract with Action Ambulance?
Well, if he's not answering, I don't believe he wrote any contract. I believe we wrote mutual aid.
Well, I have a copy, I have a copy of it. Right, and, and it's very specific. And one of the things that says that they're, at some point, they're going to create a full-time fire department. They've got no authorization to do that, and they've got no authorization to write a contract. And it's quite clear through a legal, our legal counsel told them 10 years ago that they're, that the Board of Selectmen control the fire department. And I'd like to know what authority that they think that they had to propose a contract to Action Ambulance that would undermine the contract we currently have.
Again.
Who wrote it? I'd like to know, who in the department wrote it?
Speaking of contract, I have not seen any contract personally, so I cannot speak on this.
You have a copy of it?
I've seen a proposal for service, and we've seen mutual aid agreements to assist the EMS program.
And that's not what it says here. This is an agreement with the Action Ambulance. The purpose of this agreement is, is to facilitate working relationship. And it goes into great detail about what Hampton will do and what Action won't do. And then it goes into further detail explaining that, let me see. Let's see, the accident is not available, okay. The fire department will make every effort to, let me just get my. It says, during off-hours consistent weekends, is able to provide in-house staffing. Until the date and time where the Hampton Fire Department is able to provide in-house staffing during these times, response personnel will be proceeded to the state of thing. So apparently, the fire department feels that they're going to create a full-time ambulance service. And I'd like to know, under what authority?
That's not the plan, and the chief says.
That's what it says. I don't, I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear what you're telling me. I, I want to know, I'm telling you what it says, and I want to know, who was at the meeting? Who wrote the contract?
Okay, the chief is on, and I'm trying to get the number of what number he has to be unmuted. And we'll provide those answers.
Hearing no response. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Yeah, I think we have, I think we have, yeah. And this, after someone admits who wrote it and what the plan was and why they did it, and under what a fuck they felt they could script this.
They might be under fire. Fire just popped up.
I mean, there are some questions, Don. I think your point is maybe, the, there are some questions also with implementation. As we found out that, I think in many meetings, we talked about the ambulance being stationed at the police station. And then when the July 1st showed up, it's at a rented facility on East Long Meadow Road, unbeknownst to the board. This board was never told that it was not going to be housed at the Sally Port at the police station. Never came up in any meeting when Mr. Rock was here at the thing.
Right, that, that's an issue, that's an issue.
We have with Action as well. We need to have that, I understand that.
We have to have that conversation with them.
We should, because now we have an issue with the planning board that the building inspector at the facility is not right. Where it would have been right if we stayed at the police station, as we all thought all along.
Well, those are questions, those are certainly questions we have to get answered.
I agree.
From what I understand, at the police station, they also had.
They had to put on modular buildings.
That all, that all has to be looked into.
I agree. So I'm saying there's a broad thing, you know, if we have a cooperative dispute over a cooperative agreement between a memorandum of understanding, as Don said, it appears to be more of a contract type thing. Need to get that straightened out. And it looks to be honestly, you know, trying to establish, as Bob said, a working relationship. And as, as Don said, that's all well and good. However, the board should be involved because if it's going to be labeled a contract, we need to be on top of that.
The other question I hear I have is that, it says that the ambulance service will bill for services ready for all transport. So have you signed a contract with an ambulance, a billing service yet? Do you, and what billing service do you intend to employ?
Again, I think the chief is really trying to get on here to chime in. Everything we've done to this point was under the approval of your guys' vote, you know.
No, it was under approval of us guys. We didn't approve you guys to go out and get a, write a contract.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, we had a hard time signing into Zoom this evening. I apologize about that. Can you turn yours, maybe yours? Okay, awesome. All right, so I believe the question, who, the question that Don proposed was, who gave us the right to write a contract?
Yeah.
This isn't the, I assume the document that Bob Markle sent me this afternoon, this is just a BLS backup agreement with Action. It's not necessarily a contract. It was under the assumption that we would still be able to run our BLS ambulance eight to four, Monday through Friday. It's previously.
It says here, it says here in line 12, this agreement constitutes a valid contract between the undersigned agency. So please don't mince words. You went and wrote a contract, you don't have the authority to do it. You're usurping the selectmen's authority. You're undermining a contract that we worked months and months on to provide ambulance service of the town. And I don't know, I'd like to know the reason why. I want to know who wrote it and I want to know, know who called the meeting with Action Ambulance to discuss this.
All right, so that, obviously, that wasn't the fire department's intention, but the person that wrote it is Lieutenant Sterling.
Right, now Lieutenant Sterling, Lieutenant Sterling, who obviously has a conflict because of his association with another ambulance company.
But he's here right now and he's here to answer your questions.
So, Mr. Selectmen, one of the things you have to understand, and this is trying to explain the process here, all ambulance services in Massachusetts are responsible for writing their own mutual aid and ALS intercept agreements with all other services operating within their service zone plan. That's actually outlined under 105 CMR 170. That's the state regulations covering emergency medical services. We actually have a responsibility to do that, not only with Action, but because we're bordered by East Long Meadow, Munson, Wilbraham, and I believe it's ASM to the south. Because we are in this service zone area and we have been a licensed ambulance service for the last three years, we are actually responsible to maintain those agreements per the state. That meeting that was called with, I believe it was Rock from Action Ambulance this past week, was under the direction of the Region One Medical Director, who oversees all ambulance services in western Massachusetts, who also happens to be their and our medical director.
So would you say that the use of the word contract is misleading in this? It's strictly just a mutual aid agreement?
That is correct. We have to have a mutual aid agreement with all services. Action is responsible for creating their advanced life support, mutual aid, and ALS intercept agreements. We are responsible for creating our own BLS mutual aid agreements and ALS intercept agreements. So that if we are operating at the BLS level, we go out and we find that the patient is going downhill and requires paramedic level services, there's an agreement in place where they will then provide these services. And that agreement has to also cover what they're going to bill us when they end up billing for their services as well.
Who's the billing, who's the billing service do you want to contract with?
As of right now, we haven't contracted with any ambulance service yet, or any ambulance billing service yet. Because we still have not.
When do you propose that you'll be able to provide in-house staffing during all these times and the, and you run the ambulance service? When do you propose that?
As, as of right now.
Who authorized that?
We're only proposing to, I'm sorry?
Who authorized that?
The authorization for the ambulance to run from Monday to Friday.
To have, to, the authorization until the department is able to provide in-house staffing during these times.
Which, which part of this are you looking at? I'm sorry.
Seven.
Number seven. So during off-hours currently, we provide staffing already with on-call. This is a document that's just designed so that if 10 years down the road, something were to change, the language is.
Two years or next year?
Two years, next year, 10 years, whatever it may be. It's just a, it's a document that basically cements that we have a BLS backup agreement to handle BLS level calls with Action Ambulance Advanced Life Support Service.
And what if the Board of Selectmen say, we don't want you to do a BLS service like we discussed before?
So, I mean, that, that is entirely your choice. We've been a licensed BLS ambulance service since April of 2017. Again, we have to follow your direction. This has been a service that's been very essential to the town. We've responded over 1,200 medical calls in that time. But again, we have to follow your direction. The steps we've taken so far was because we were told, and we had seen it, that the authorization was there for us to, to try to obtain an ambulance on our own and operate it BLS Monday through Friday from eight to four. And that is what we've been operating under so far.
As I recall, the chief said at the time, that was only to fill a gap. You think there'll be a gap if Action Ambulance can't do the BLS service?
I, I can't really speak on, on how they're operating things. I will say statistically, over just the last week, they've, they've done pretty well with sending a backup truck. There have been a few times where that backup truck has been delayed because Springfield's been busy. They do have to send that truck out of Springfield and they have other responsibilities there as well. Obviously, they're trying everything they can to follow the contract and send us their BLS backup unit, but it may take a while sometimes.
At the very least, you have, you have sought to break a lawful contract, okay? And additionally, you have, through the process, undermined the authority of the selectmen. So those two things are so inappropriate, it's hard to believe you even did it, did them. I think that we're, we're concerned that, of the tenor of the meeting, from what we've heard of the contract that you have developed, whether you call it a contract or an agreement or some parameters or whatever you call it, it states what's going to happen, and none of that has come before the board and been approved by the board. So I think you've overstepped your bounds by miles.
Madam Selectmen, like I said before, we're following the CMRs of the state. The state outlines these steps. We have to follow them.
The state came to you, and the state came to you and said, I want you to develop a contract?
There, there's, this is not a contract. Every ambulance service in the state.
Or I want you to develop an agreement. The state came to you and said that?
The state, if you look up the 105 CMR 170s, the state very clearly outlines that all ambulance services have to have mutual aid agreements, BLS backups, ALS backups, and if you're a BLS service, you have to have ALS intercept agreements. That is the responsibility of every service to meet those regulations.
So you're saying, you're saying that once we establish the ALS service in Hampton, we are obligated to enter into these agreements to, because of the, because of the existing service?
You don't have those now? You don't have those now?
Just the other towns.
Let me butt in for a second. Let me just butt in for a second here. We have, I've been signing these agreements for Action Ambulance to East Long Meadow so they can do mutual aid. I've been, there's one going to Wilbraham. So all these surrounding, there's a lot of these forms. This is nothing new. This is very common to go back and forth to mutual aid.
I guess you missed the point. I understand about mutual aid agreements. And I understand about a plan for, you know, backup. And I understand about a plan for service. What I don't understand is when you write a contract that says, you will do this, Action Ambulance won't. You will do this between eight in the morning and four in the afternoon, Action Ambulance won't. You'll do this on the weekend if Action Ambulance can't. That's, goes a lot farther than just a mutual aid agreement or agreement that says, look, if you can't come, or you've got some problem, or you're on another call, we'll do the backup. That's a hell of a lot different than saying that, we're going to do this on these hours, on these specific hours, on these specific days, every day of the week, and you, you're not going to do it. That's a lot.
So, one of the things you have to understand is a lot of this is based off of ALS.
I'm tired of people telling me I don't understand something. I understand. I read the CMR. I understand you need a backup and a mutual aid agreement. What I don't understand is why you would say, we're going to do this during these hours, and Action Ambulance, even though you have a contract with the town, you're not going to do it. I want to know.
That's not what I'm saying, sir. What I'm saying is.
I know you guys want to have a full-time ambulance service. This is not.
We're happy operating just eight to four, okay? What, what happened with all this is before these contracts and these agreements can be put into play, they have to be reviewed by the service medical directors as well. These are the oversight positions that have ultimate authority over the clinical care. The contract was reviewed by Action and our medical director. It was found to be in conflict with the state regulations. And especially in the area that focuses on appropriate EMD of calls, where BLS level Alpha and Bravo calls go to the closest, most appropriate BLS unit, keeping the ALS unit in service for actual ALS calls so that you don't end up with an advanced level ambulance going for a stub toe and the BLS ambulance being stuck on a very serious call without the appropriate level of care. So during this meeting that was facilitated by the medical director, all parties involved, including Action's representatives, were in agreement that the contract does need to reflect that. And therefore, it would take all of us going back down together, with the medical director there as well, to help everybody understand that this is why these things have to be done. It is all per state regulations.
Yeah, no, it is. I find it hard to believe that the, the Action that has been in this business for so many years doesn't know what the state requirements are, and that you know better. And I also would like to know who wrote this document, what the source of this document is that you have presented as approved by the state. Has the state seen it? Have they, is this their document?
The state has not.
The whole thing has a very funny taste, and it's, it's not, it's not appropriate. It really isn't.
Matt, if I can intervene here.
Absolutely.
It sounds like some important decisions are in the process of being made without any reference to the Board of Selectmen, or for that matter, the town administrator. We were all in the dark. And we find an agreement that resulted in a call from Action Ambulance to me saying that, in their opinion, if they signed the agreement proposed by the fire department, it would be in violation of the contract that the selectmen signed with them just recently. The fire department is not an autonomous department. They are under the Board of Selectmen, who are the elected representatives of the people of this community. And to just go off and, and say, well, I'm required to do this by the state. Well, even if you are, you have an obligation to apprise the Board of Selectmen as to what's going on and not have them find out the way they did.
I think the key part there is he's saying is, we weren't kept in the loop right there. You may have a point saying that there's parts of the contract that are in conflict with practice needs to be done. That needed to come back to us. We were the people negotiating the contract, not you. We're the people contacting the law firm that we pay, not you. You may have a valid point. You've got experience with other towns, but it still had to go up the chain and let Don reach out to the thing. If there is something that's in conflict, come back to Bob, come back to Don, let's straighten it out. Nothing's set in stone, but we can't have seven different directions going. That's key. We're all for the same thing. We're all there to provide good care for people in town. But we need to all be on the same page, protecting everything. I believe what you say, that this is an agreement, I think using the word contract in it set a bad tone. It probably is mutual aid agreement like you have with Wilbraham, like you have with East Long Meadow. Got that. We need to be in the loop. That needs to start at the top of the chain and come back down. Come up with ideas, get them signed off by the board.
I don't, I don't think they proceed on it at all. I think the board proceeds on it. I think they can have a, if we had a committee, they could have a representative on the committee, but it is not their agreement to negotiate. It's our agreement to negotiate.
Mutual aid agreements? Mutual aid agreements?
No, not mutual aid.
That's what I'm talking about. No, that's what I'm talking, mutual aid agreement. That is a mutual aid agreement is what it is.
Well.
Between the two, he's saying, the director, medical director says, when you have two ambulance services in town, you have to have a mutual aid agreement between them to figure out who's in charge. Is that correct, Matt? Basically because you have multiple services providing?
It, it's not to figure out who's in charge. Again, it's to assure that the appropriate level ambulance goes to the appropriate level call, so that we don't have an ALS call being tied up for two hours.
And I think that's part of the conflict here because we gave that, so to speak, to Action as part of our negotiation. They were going to respond to everything. And you're saying the problem there, and this should have come up honestly a month ago, is that you could, as you said, the stub toe type thing, decent argument, but it's kind of 11th hour right now, and that's kind of where we are. So I think there needs to be.
Also, is it our fire department's position that they should tell the privately hired ambulance service for our town, which calls they should take? That, that the dispatcher should give the first call to them and then the second call.
Well, I don't think he said it was that, he didn't say it was, they said that. They said the medical director for the whole region said this is how it operates. He said, he said he called the meeting. You now have.
Just to clarify.
They called the meeting for three people, okay? The Wilbraham Fire Chief, the Hampton person, and Rock. That was who the meeting was called. When the meeting happened, there were more people there, which include Dr. Beltran and a woman on the phone, who I don't know who she was, and somebody else. So it's just all done inappropriately. It really is. The meeting was called inappropriately, I think. I don't think it's their role to tell dispatch where they should be contacting first and second and whenever. I just think the whole thing is just, and especially when the number of calls we get is going to diminish the cost of our service. So we want the more calls we can get, the better. We like it.
So just to clarify a few points here.
Raise the cost of service is what you mean. We'd be happy to diminish the cost of our service.
Well, of ours.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully, if we get more calls, we, our contribution goes down, basically.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So just to clarify part of that point, you do bring up good points. The thing to keep in mind is, we're not telling the dispatchers how to do their jobs. Their EMD protocols that they're trained on are the ones that we're trying to, to work out these agreements with. Their EMD protocols that they already follow dictate what level of call goes to who. We're not telling them, you have to do this because we said so. The contract does not specifically follow any.
The contract does not specifically follow anything having to do with EMD and appropriate utilization resource at all. So the agreements basically say, "Okay, if EMD, the dispatcher picks up the phone and we find out it is a basic level call, the appropriate thing to do per state regulations is send the basic level truck." Whereas if it's an advanced level call, the appropriate state regulation says you will send the closest, most appropriate advanced level truck. So all we're trying to do, and this was pointed out to us once we finally saw the contract, was say, "Okay, it has to address that somehow," and that's a concern the medical director has because he has to also sign off on those dispatch policies.
It would have been good to have a medical director. Is that Dr. Beltran?
That is.
So he never had a chance to review the contract prior to us endorsing it.
That's correct. The first time he saw it was when we met with Action. There was no other chief from any other department there, and the person that was on the phone was his assistant at the hospital.
But it was reviewed by Town Council.
Right. And, and once this board has lost authority, it becomes, we become irrelevant. I mean, if we have the authority over the fire department, then we have to exercise that authority or we won't have authority over anybody, because everybody else will see this is how we operate. I think you have to, you have to go through the right procedures. Process is very important.
I just want to add one thing to this. The, I know the contract stated that the police chief was in charge of the contract, and a week before Action was due to come in, I guess it got switched to the fire chief. I'm more than happy to do that. We scrambled a little bit to get Action in here, get them up and running for July 1st. And whatever the board chooses to do, obviously, the fire department is willing to help out the town in any way it needs to.
It'd be helpful if Dr. Beltran met with Bob to express his concerns with the contract and share, you know, top level, the top level type thing, you know? If there's something they're noncompliant with, share with Bob, and he can bring it back to the board.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We're going to have Mr., we're going to have Mr. Markle meet with Dr. Beltran and see if we can get one straight, one thing straight at a time.
I'll speak with one voice.
We'll speak with one voice. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Council on Aging discussion, appointments. Can you hear Pam, everyone? Raise your hand.
Anybody?
Anybody here, Pam? Over here.
No, we cannot.
Becky and I talked, and she sent me a list of people who are currently on the COA board who wish to continue to be on the board, and asked whether or not the board would like to reappoint. And I did say certainly that they would look at it, but there are many times that the board would like to open that opportunity to other people in town.
Yeah, I think there's, if I remember correctly, there are currently four people that are up this year, maybe three or four. We also have, I think, one, I don't know if Becky's on the call.
I am.
Okay, is there one under 60 still open?
Yes, we have an under 60 open, yes.
Okay. And nobody in this room qualifies?
Oh, funny.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Whoa, God, yeah. Nice try. So I assume that the four people that are up this year would all like to continue?
They would. And they sent a, I forwarded their request over to Pam and-
All right. So a motion?
Typical three-year term. What are the four names, Becky?
It's Deanna Vermette, Nancy Willoughby, Ed Norman, and Deborah Mahoney.
Okay. Make a motion to reappoint those four people as named by the Council on Aging Director to three-year terms commencing July 1st.
I think, I think it is good, however, I mean, I think this is fine because all of our employees are so much easier. But I think it is good, however, periodically to open these things up, to like put them on the website or something. So if we have other people that might be interested in being of service, we can utilize it.
We can, we can, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt. We still have vacancies for both an over 60 and an under 60 member, so the board is not-
Maybe those could be posted.
Yeah, so we can post those in the newsletter and also in the Wilbraham-Hampden-
Yeah, that would be great.
You'll put them on our posting list?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. The next item on the agenda is appointment of an associate member of the planning board.
Let me go and get the chair of the planning board.
Get the chair of the planning board.
And the members are going to vote and make a recommendation to you.
That's the man. No, 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 no. There they are. Oh, the whole crew is here.
We got a quorum.
We got a quorum.
And I'm nominating, we are nominating Rick Green as the associate member of the board.
And he's served before for a long time. How many years was he on before? Five to five-year term?
I think he was associate, then went up to, yeah, right.
I made the motion.
I'll second his motion, okay. Is it a one-year term? I think it is, right? Or is it until they leave? Anyway, I'll second the motion to the appropriate term, and we can research that.
It's like a judge until they leave. Okay. Oh, yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. You guys all voted unanimously.
And we're signing off to Phil because Phil was the associate.
Okay.
He's going to train.
Thanks, Phil.
The next item on the agenda is a work fan for the regional dispatch decision. I put this on the agenda because we had agreed back in February or March that we would bring it to a town meeting or around a town meeting. So I wanted to work, try to think, work out a plan whereby we reached out to, back to WestCom. We had some discussion with Wilbraham. I think Ludlow was involved there. They had some, for a while. And Palmer, possibly?
No. We, we reached out to them, but there was no interest there.
Okay. I think now that they've had a reconfiguration, if you will, and Wilbraham, a good chance to circle back with them.
Yeah.
They were doing a research.
Ludlow really had not, it was premature for Ludlow as well.
And the other thing would be, where does WestCom stand on the new building?
Where does WestCom stand on the building? We get, need to figure out a way to gather information from East Long Meadow and Munson to see what their experience was. We still have to answer the question of the dark police station, how we would handle that. I'd be interested in knowing, trying to figure out what the unemployment cost to the town would be if we had to lay people off or we decided to go.
Mr. Chair, I think this is, you've got a lot of good questions here. And to put, I hate to say it, a gun to our head to get it done for an October town meeting when we have the other budget issues in front of us. I wonder if you're interested in getting, again, a good opportunity for citizens to get involved and put it on for something to get done for next year. We're already done with this budget year, if you will.
Well, I think we made the commitment to do it for October.
We can have a report, we can have a report.
We could do, we could get, if we want to do a committee, Mary Ellen, you think about a committee to look into this, or?
We've got citizens that have been wanting to participate, and I think a good opportunity for that.
I have mixed feelings. I think it's a, it's a, it's a-
We have a lot of information already.
We have a lot of information, and it's a, it's a factual-driven issue. I think what they have to do is get it facts and say, "Okay, this is what this will do, this is what this will do, this is what this will do." And I don't think a committee aids in that. A committee aids in discussing things we have discussable issues. But it seems to me that we're really looking at, at facts. What, what did you do about a dark thing? What did you do about a dark police station? What did you do about, and, and like one person, you want to get that information, or several people, or the Town Administrator, or whatever. So I'm not sure that I'm, I'm into a committee. Also, I think a committee ties the hands of the Selectmen a little bit in that they come back and say, "We don't want," whatever, Wilbraham, or "We don't want WestCom." You feel a little obliged because they did all the work, and you want to give them credibility to go along with whatever their recommendation is. So I have, I have some reservations about you.
But I think there's an opportunity. We have an awful lot of tasks already for, as you said, for Bob to work on. We have an opportunity, it is factually driven, and the opportunity to assign maybe Bob in charge. A, I need you to go find out this. B, go meet with these people, report back. You don't want it to drag on, and you're 100% right about that. But there's an opportunity to diversify and bring all these facts back without overloading one person. We can set the goal for the October town meeting and periodically meet with them and report back and see how possible it is.
Can, can we just have, use the resources of the, of the people we have, the town officials that we have? I mean, you can reach out to the-
To the treasurer?
To the treasurer, to the accountant can find out, or the police chief or something. Or you can talk to the board, you know, you could talk to Mary McNally or to Nick over there. We'll see. Munson, whoever they are with the-
Ellie and Ludlow.
Yeah.
So what we-
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
We have to establish a timeline. We have to, we have to establish people that would be our resources, and then we have to develop a list of questions perhaps that we would like to see answers to. And maybe we get these questions into Bob, you know, this week, or, or whenever, and then he figures out who is the best person to answer this question.
I see that we've got three major questions off the top. One is finances, number two, unemployment cost, number three, dark station.
Okay, and, and, but then you have questions, like for example, for WestCom, or I would say probably mainly for WestCom, would they take some of our people over there? What are some other carrots that they might want to put out there if they could? I don't know that they can. I don't know if they're even viable. I don't even know if they can take any people. They may not be taking anybody new.
And we have to verify if the Commonwealth is going to come across.
Right. What's, how firm is that money? Then if Wilbraham was going to do it, would they take some of our people over there? And be able to bring them into our, into their program?
And some of those answers we had before, but we need to circle back and make sure they're still, still in place. Again, just as Bob said, you know, with the state funding thing, some of that money that I know it came from the phone charge, but still, is that money locked in? Just like we saw the road money go away, it was held out.
They voted for it, it's to get back.
I have a question.
First, why don't we make a list of, each of us make a list of questions, send them to Bob. I'm sure that some of them will be duplicates, and then he can come up with that list, and we go from there.
And Bob, if he wants to establish it, how-
I'll ask a question.
Knock himself out, right?
Exactly.
Can I, can I ask a question? Is that possible?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just have a question about the, about the dispatch. I understand there's three grants that go to help pay for the dispatch. One is the 911, and I believe that's not going away. Everybody pays that. And that's specifically money allotted for dispatch. And I'd like to know what the minimum requirement of employees would be neat, are needed to, to be at the station. I understand he, there was another full-timer hired and another part-time. So if you cut down bare bones employees to cover the station, and I'd like to know how much that would cost with the bare minimum number of dispatchers needed to keep their jobs?
Well, I would-
With proper coverage.
His question.
And then the cost of the three grants, how much money is allotted to pay their salaries? And then what the margin is that's needed, if it's maybe 20,000, 30,000? I want to know how much is not covered.
Anyhow.
So I don't think they're operating bare bones.
Can you email them to Bob as part of the one-
Is there anybody else online that has questions?
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
What was that movie? What About Bob? Something like that.
I'm not getting enough emails, so I mean-
Really?
You need more emails. I noticed that.
A motion for a bigger heart drive for Bob?
Liaison, Selectmen liaison. So we're going to send our questions in. Anyone who has any questions or thoughts about it that's listening can send it in, and we'll compile a list and we'll-
And our timeline is, we want this done by, if we can have it done by, we want it done by the advisory hearing before.
Yeah.
Which is, do we have a date of that?
They don't have that yet.
We haven't set our town meeting day yet.
It's usually, it's usually-
Typically, it's the, our town meeting is the last meeting in October. But again, same thing. Where's the state going with their money? And if we actually have to reappropriate, we need to know that.
So if we set such a period again.
But the other thing is that we need to set, have it done before setting the tax rate. So it's the balancing between the two.
Before your packet, John has given us a list of-
So back in the day, we used to assign different members of the board. Jimon, he recalls, we did this, where different members of the board, probably afraid I would ask him to be a liaison. And you see on the list here, Don, Jim, Wayne, dating ourselves here. So this is the type of thing that was done. So that way, we would take responsibility to outreach to different boards, different departments, and then come back and report to the board and give a little update. So on open suggestions. I have a, for instance, you know, I would take, I would volunteer for planning because obviously I have a background in planning, 15 years on the board. School committee, it suggests one of you two, you have a background in the school committee, you know, that type of thing.
I made a list also of, by going through the town reports and so forth, and I have 27 different, different-
Yeah, I don't think, some of those are going to be Bob, you know, yeah.
Yeah, hello. We certainly can't do 27. I did think that, I think having liaisons is a great idea, but I did think that it should be like a two-year term and we rotate through. I mean, not that we're all going to be here after tonight, who knows? But so that you don't, you don't develop a fiefdom, you know, like I'm the only one that knows about police, and you're the, or schools, and you're the only one that knows about planning.
Yeah, it was only, before it was only, before it was one year.
Yeah, okay, so one year, so.
Yeah, that's how it is. And then we reevaluate that year, okay. You had a good time with planning?
The only reason I saw two years was because I think the first year you sort of learn what's going on. And when it goes to the second time, you get a little more. But it can be either of those. And then I, what was the other thing I thought? Oh, we ought to have their meeting schedules so that we can attend their meetings.
Well, we all know those.
I don't have any.
They're online.
But I have every one. We don't have a master meeting schedule?
Yeah, on the website, it shows. If you look at the department, it tells when they meet.
But I have to look at each department, right?
Yeah.
We don't have a master one, okay.
Oh, there's also in the town report, there's a full page of when, of the departments and when they meet.
I've seen it in the town report.
Yeah, yeah.
A calendar shows all the-
All the meetings at my-
Actually, Wendy, if you click on departments, it shows departments, and then their meeting date and their phone number as well.
So for example, the Board of Health is going to meet the first Monday of every month. So if I was going to give that commitment, I would say I have to be free the first Monday of every month. That's the only one I know. Okay?
Well, technically, no. But okay, as Don said last time.
Well, that's what we're doing.
No, no, technically, the Board of Health is not meeting.
Right, right.
We're the Board of Health.
Why do you call them then?
You're just reporting back. You're the Board Head Chair.
Your subcommittee.
The Board of Health Subcommittee.
The meeting with, yeah, the meeting with your agent, reporting back.
The Board of Health Subcommittee is meeting the Mondays. I know that. That's silly, I know. And I know the Selectmen. So we can assign these or whatever you want to do.
I was going to throw stormwater to you.
Okay. Yeah, I'll take stormwater.
Capital I talked about last week, re-kicking that. I talked to you-
Don, you're taking stormwater?
Yeah, yeah, John's going to get planning. Let's do that.
You'll have to bring the planning board back in, see how they feel about it.
Oh.
Okay, advisory. Don, you want to do advisory?
I'll do advisory.
Emergency management, I would make Bob, you know?
Emergency management and police can probably go together maybe, can they? Because that's probably similar.
Should I be the liaison to the fire department?
Well, I was before. Well, I think one of you two for the school committee, yeah.
For the school committee?
You've got Don, your stormwater. Mary Ellen, your school committee. Don, your advisor. I can do, I'd like to do highway.
Okay.
I'm so close to home, I can walk over there.
Do we say police for Bob? Did we say?
Well, it's an emergency management, if you want to make them both, basically, that's fine.
John, you're the cap-
We want to be sure there's equity in that, somebody's not overloaded.
No.
You know?
The insurance thing at the bottom, insurance and cable, this is something we talked about before. And you, Don, you may be more familiar with the history of the cable thing, and people complain about cable. It is a monopoly. We've had this people where they've beaten on the door. You may have had this in Springfield and other towns. Why don't we get another provider in here? Because they'd have to buy out the current one, and nobody wants to pay that kind of money.
Do that at the end of the contract.
And even that's- There was a few years back when they did some channel switching, we were actually going to be going to Comcast as part of the national change of venue. And then the FCC turned down the deal, and we stayed with Charter. Now, talking to friends of mine in Springfield, they said you would have the same problem. There's many people that complain about Comcast.
It's just a different name, but you have the same.
Exactly right. So, um, so, but an insurance committee, I think, is a decent idea. We used to have one back in the day, Hank Hamner, Bill Olmstead, those guys, that would, that had expertise- We used to have one back in the day, Hank Hamner, Bill Olmstead, those guys, that would, that had expertise in different areas of insurance and would advise about what should be covered going forward. I think, um, they met twice, three times a year and just reviewed the policies and came back, just to keep, I don't want to say the insurance company's honest, but to make sure we were getting the best deal and protecting ourselves the best way. Those are small committees that I think we could have a good use for. People that have an expertise in this, hey, I'd be happy to advise. I don't have to run for anything. I'll meet twice. And I contribute.
So could we put off feels for a group of?
That type of thing.
Three or four.
That seemed to make a lot of sense.
You see in other towns.
I do, I do keep an eye to some extent on it. I, I would say the town has an absolutely excellent health insurance association, as good as any in the state. Uh, your, your insurance, your other insurance building, liability insurance with Berry, they're better, frankly, and, uh, the, uh, MMA's, uh, sure. Uh, but I think having, looking at the policies and examining, are, are we properly insured, properly covered is another question.
Drivers, the whole thing, we have that type of thing, making sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
And the next thing would be, maybe, Don, we want to have somebody look at our retirement options. You know, we talked about before that the state has a, like Dean Rogan has gave a, a great seminar, we've got about ten years ago, about different options for different towns. That's the highest increasing segment of our budget every year. It goes up well over ten percent and we have no control over it. Maybe we have some other options. Maybe we get some people involved in looking at that. If we're trying to rein in different growth things, that's one right there.
That's a big one. It goes well above inflation every year.
Right. And they're allowed to.
Yes.
You know, and there's nothing you can say about it. Trying to get back to, um, Health Trust is currently, that's Dick, is the treasurer.
Yeah.
Health Trust. Right, Dick is the rep now or you are?
Yeah.
Is Dick, okay, yeah. And then you've got your other board, Marielle, and you probably had a list, you know, you're looking at appeals, things like Concom, you know.
I've got, um, assessors, I've got capital planning. Capital planning is a big, is a big.
Yeah, I got that.
I'm going to do that one.
The, I mean, assessors is a good one to meet with.
Assessors are good to know what they're going, especially the new assessors coming in.
Excuse me, who's?
He's been on, he's been on for a while.
John.
Jay, he replaced Chuck when Chuck resigned.
Oh, okay.
But Concom would be a thing and that's, uh, oh, do you want to, because I mean, getting some help for down there, I don't know if that's something you'd like to.
I'd like to, but it seems like it's hopeless. It just seems like it's hopeless. We've got three applications and they're all from the other part of the state or wherever they're from.
I'll do Concom. I'll take that.
Take a stab at it.
And that's it for me, because being the chairman. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What other?
I figured with the stormwater and.
I have, um, on this list, I have, I said, we did fire, who did we do for fire? Did we do fire? Oh, I was going to suggest, they're going to say none of this, but that we have a commission, a, a public safety commission that approves fire and, that deals with fire and police. And they do nothing, they don't go through this commission. Now, I know that does another level.
Yeah, I think we're a little small. I think, yeah, we're a little small, ever separate commission. We technically, keep in mind, technically, we're the police commissioners as well.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't feel comfortable that I know what is really going on in the police station, nor what is really going on with the fire station. And maybe that's because I don't have a title, or maybe if I had a commission, I would, they would, they would know, or maybe they wouldn't know either. Um, I just think there's, we've got to come up with a way of having more information on this so that we can justify the cost that we're spending for those departments. If they're coming forward for requests for other things, we can justify that. But I don't feel that I know enough about it and I listen.
Well, we gave Bob emergency management.
Going to help us a lot here too.
Yeah, why don't we give Bob all three, I guess? Because he's.
It's going to give us financial data.
Okay.
Imperative financial information.
Yeah, okay.
ADA is already covered with Becky.
I had park and rec, I had library.
Oh, park and rec.
I had, uh, what else did I have? I had building.
Building is technically under selection already and a lot of really.
I think all of these are.
No, but no, parks is lucky. Who wants parks?
Libraries, libraries.
Are you writing all these down? Who wants parks?
I can do parks, I don't care. So Marielle, I put you for school committee and parks? And I'm on, oh, I got my new.
Yeah.
I'm on, there was one other one, what's the other one?
Yeah, we gave her Concom. No, Don took Concom.
Took Concom. You got Board of Health and you think that's one of the.
Yeah, that's funny. That's pretty good right there.
Okay, so I have three. Don has.
Look, we come up with others.
I got three. I got advisory, storm and Concom.
All right, I got capital, highway, and.
I have advisory, stormwater and Concom.
We are going to have one more committee. Some touch with Becky about this. Uh, we do have a disabilities committee.
No, I mentioned that.
That was about.
I mentioned that, yeah. No, it's on the list here.
Yeah, what do you have?
You already got Becky covering it.
School committee and, um, Board of Health. And Bob has police.
Fire.
Emergency management.
Basically, it's a core, it's a core thing already anyhow.
He's the commission.
Got a badge.
I've got a badge.
I figured you did. Let's go over.
All right, good.
Probably with seven other town names on it, probably long as this. We have one that says Ipswich, Templeton.
All right, uh, moving on undaunted.
Yeah.
Vacation carryover.
I have all the letters that are requested. You have the chart that Pam updated from last week.
Bob just asked that I do the daily rate for those people who had vacation. Vacation left over or carry over. So that's in the far right margin.
So also the other thing we talked about was looking into the contracts. For instance, we have a couple of people that have contracts and that's the police chief, uh, highway. What's allowed in their contract?
I have a look into that at this point.
Jeff has shown he has two hundred and forty days.
Yes.
Per contract, what's he allowed to carry? And obviously with his work, he can make a pretty case where he couldn't take any vacation.
He has two hundred and forty days and two hundred and forty hours.
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 Yeah, I know. There was days where.
I'm going to say for gosh.
Why would he be here?
I want to apply for that job. And the policy manual says. Or the, whatever you call it.
Says a maximum of five days with permission of the Board of Selectmen. That's it.
The five days is with permission of the selectmen.
With the permission of the selectmen.
Okay. It could be carried over, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have researched in some other communities and said, what have you got, what have you guys done about this? And they said they did a one-time, clearly in the thing, due to the emergency, we're allowing an extra five days, must be used in the first two months, something like that. One-time offer not to be repeated in following years unless the second wave comes.
In, in talking with, uh, various town employees, there are some who say, uh, this COVID came at just the wrong time when I was planning on taking vacation. I have more than five days, uh, and so I'm going to lose it and I don't think it's my fault. I think, you know, it's, uh, it's complicated, obviously, but that's, that's one of the, uh, I just had a discussion with a, a library employee about this just last week. And you know, I, I didn't check to see when these people have actually informed their department head that they're taking a vacation, but the end of spring of the year, when it warms up and late winter is, when people do take vacation. I'm sure there are some who can make a pretty strong case that they have, uh, but unable to take vacation days this, well, this past fiscal year, uh, because of the closing of the town hall and the bars.
Well, let, let's just, for the sake of discussion here, vacation doesn't mean you get to go away. If you don't get to go to Florida or to the Bahamas or to the Cape or something, you know, it doesn't count. Your vacation is time away from work, period. Whether you do yard work, go visit your grandma in Canada, stay home and do nothing, it's days off. So the premise that I had to cancel my vacation, or I couldn't go to the beach, or I couldn't get on a plane, isn't a valid reason, in my opinion. Now, that doesn't mean, because I'm not willing to give people, you know, the five days because in our, in our, uh, policy manual, it doesn't really say extenuating circumstances or that. It just says you can ask your supervisor for permission to carry over five days. But I want to make it clear to everyone from now on in the future, that a vacation means you're not at work. Not at the beach. You know, you can stay home, you can do whatever you want, but it's a day not at work.
However, if because of this, they felt they had to continue working to provide the service they were in this emergency obligated to, and have had this, I've had a situation work where I've had to tell an employee, look, I got this big project coming up. I know you're planning on going home and like working on the yard next week. I need you in. So you have to cancel your vacation because work is required. And that is the thing, yeah, they're not going to Florida. They have plans, stay home and do things. However, you have to come to work.
But I, I think that they all knew what the process was and they all knew what the procedure was. So the idea was, I have to put in these, I have to put in for my vacation to my superior and in, from March until June thirtieth, okay, I have to take those days. Now, it could not be that every single one of those days they had, it was COVID-related. That is impossible. It can't even be that all of the employees, it was COVID-related, because that was impossible. So there are some people that had a COVID responsibility. Okay, maybe the police chief did. Okay, or I don't know.
Or the health.
Or the health department, health. Um, but it certainly wasn't everybody. And I think that to go with the, with the, with what the, what the, um, I'm a big believer in that if you set a parameter, you, you live by that parameter. And we have set it in the policy manual, and I think that's what we have to live with, because I think that that's, that was our word. That's what we said. And once you change your word, then you get a hundred people coming in with other different requests. You don't ever, and there's no end. I mean, not, not on vacation particularly, but on other things, yeah.
Now, there was also an issue that you said some people believe that they could carry over more days, or they've been accumulating days for a number of years?
I don't know how it happened, but there are some who have, you know, I think significant numbers of days that haven't been used if carried over, I guess. There's been some accumulation in some instances.
Oh. My fault.
The chief, chief of police.
Well, that's why we asked. I know he's allowed to accumulate sick days up to a certain time.
Okay, so these, all of these.
Library employee too.
So all these, all these people here have submitted, okay, so.
I have the letters here. They, uh, they all submitted letters requesting the Board of Selectmen to move their vacation days forward.
Five days.
Some have less than five days.
Right, right.
Our health, as an example, has three days. So, uh, it varies, but it's up to five days.
Okay, so in the five days is not eight-hour days, it's.
Well, that's what we were figuring.
At hours, hours.
Yes. That's what I'd ask Pam to figure.
So this is the vacation hours they have. So if this particular person works twenty hours per week and they have twenty-two point five hours left over, they really just have a week and two hours. A work, their work week in two hours.
So the value you see in the far right is a daily amount.
Right.
For one day.
For one day.
So you can determine how many days they wish to.
And they get proportionate, they get proportionate vacation as well. So that's, that's what I'd ask Pam to figure out. Some work seven hours, some work less, some work more.
Yeah.
So a day, what does a day constitute? How many hours? It varies.
Me.
There's something else you might want to consider in the same five days. Now, I'm going to take five days to the bank, but, but our work week is a four-day work week. So do you mean four? Because that's a week's vacation for us.
All the things.
But if, but if, if the policy manual says five days.
Five days is five, is five work days.
So I say it's five work days. Okay.
Up to five, yeah.
Yeah, up to five one day.
It's a week and one day. Good luck to you.
A work week and one day.
Depending upon how many hours you work.
Right.
Okay. All right. So it looks like to me, just briefly, we have, skipping that one, we have this person, Wendy, right, Wendy Bell. She, she has less than a week, less than five days.
Right.
Right? Uh, the chief, you gotta look at his contract. Jane has, Farantino has less than a week, right? Yeah, Joanne, yeah, you know.
Two hours over.
Two hours over, right, okay. Joanne, okay, so then all the, all the rest of these people get nothing on that page. And we're over here. Mark has got a contract too, right? So it's got to be what's written in his contract.
So the big one on this page is Becky. And part of that is because her anniversary date did not restart, which is July first last year, so it was November first.
It's November twenty-fifth.
Thank you. I think, oh, she's listening. I think the easiest way to handle it is just keep the anniversary date and therefore she'll have the five weeks to use up in the next calendar year, basically, like a regular vacation thing. So they don't expire, but they're also not going to restart as of July first. And so she'll have five weeks to use up in the next.
By November.
Six months or whatever. Right. And a lot more realistic.
Does her, does it, then does her anniversary date change to November when we have everybody else?
Well, I would, I would suggest, and this is obviously the conversation you have with Becky, is that I would like to get everyone on July first. There would have to be some type of prorating, and that's what wasn't done with this. Because if you're doing the, uh, seven-month thing, you know, then that November to July of twenty-twenty-one might be a change of period, but that's something to bring into the board and discuss. I think the fair thing right now, since she's the odd date, no offense.
But didn't everybody change their anniversary date?
But not.
But I was October, it's November.
Right. And for some reason, and for some reason, for some reason, that one didn't get changed.
Are you in the same situation she's in?
I am, I am.
So I think there would be many people in that situation, perhaps. I don't know, but there are a few of us at least. I would think so.
Yeah.
So your, your time to use that vacation time has been compressed.
Hmm, right.
And there was supposed to be some sort of adjustment made.
Right. Anything done.
Okay. I'll go ahead.
Uh, the other, I think, uh, step that needs to be taken is that, and we're going to do it, is track uh, vacation time centrally on the time sheet. Uh, right now it's tracked by department. Uh, tracking it centrally, I think will make, make it a lot easier.
They're going to become more aware every time they get their pay stub. They know, I think.
I thought so too. I thought that was, I thought it was built into, what is it, ADP or Paycheck? I thought it was already, it's on mine. We track sick time and hours on our pay stub.
Oh, the ones we get from the town.
No, I'm saying mine.
Right.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah, I, I think it probably is tracked by the third-party payroll company.
Only if you put the right information on the time.
But we, yeah, but that information isn't.
Well, I thought, I thought I have to say lately in the last time sheet, people have been putting down, okay, this, uh, wasn't it Wednesday, vacation day? It wasn't in, you know, this, but I think the information is going to Dick and he's getting it. Bob should verify that, but it's gotten much better in the past couple of years. Like you say, garbage in, garbage out. If you don't get the information to them, everything looks like you, you worked every day.
But it's good to have it centralized.
Yeah, I think, you know, tracking it on, tracking it on the weekly time sheet. So that as an employee, you put down, I worked three days this week, I took a day off. That's, that's something that obviously the, the, the third-party payroll company would have, but also it would be more readily available to, you know, to the town.
May I suggest a motion to approve the five days for everyone who submitted a letter? And then. give me another sheet next week to see what's left over. Because the chief has a contract, and the highway has a contract, you know, so let's look at those things. So at least this will get the five days.
And we get the outstanding anniversary date.
Then we have the outstanding anniversary date, so you can figure that out.
If we're going to do the anniversary date, Bob, I think we have to look at everybody whose anniversary date would be as significantly affected as hers, you know, so that there, you know, everybody. I mean, it seems to me there'd be several.
I'm sure there are others. Not many though, because I think I would have heard from them. I was aware of Becky's situation.
So let's.
Can I make a comment? Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Thanks. I just, I, for myself, as well as for my department, I just want to be very clear about something. I don't want you to think that we don't understand the policy that we need to take vacation time prior to a certain date. I don't want you to think that we just schluff that off for some reason this year, but when everything shut down, our first priority was to make sure that we could get people food and medication. It was not, when are we going to take our vacation or be out of work? So I think you have to know that, I, you know, I won't speak for everybody, but I will speak for my department, that our level of dedication and commitment to our job is what kept us from taking vacation during the pandemic. I appreciate that you will address my anniversary date. But I just want you to know that it wasn't something that we just skipped over. It was very well thought out that we knew what was going to happen, but with the pandemic, our priorities were for the older people that we work for. And our first thought was not when to take vacation so we wouldn't lose it. It was how can we help these people? So I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you and your staff for doing that.
And I appreciate your comments. As a medical professional myself, who works twelve, three twelve-hour shifts back-to-back during the pandemic, I appreciate that. My only point was, there's a procedure for requesting five days, and no one seemed to know about it as of last week.
I understand.
Or act, or act on it. So, we're going to have a motion to approve the five days, and then go back and see what we have left over to see what we can do about that. Second, all in favor? Aye. So all those have been approved, we'll look at next week. All right, what else we have in this? Summer schedule. You want to, uh.
We're already halfway through. I'll tell you what we've done.
August, August usually be every other week, right?
It used to, but then it just got, what was easier is, we just scheduled every week, and Bob, or Mary, whichever, got to the chair, said, look, not much happened this week, you want to cancel next week? And we would.
Okay.
And just play it by ear, right now.
Before I got on the board, I thought you could meet every other week. I thought that's, that's what you could do all year round, because that, that makes sense to me, and it, and it did make sense to me. I now realize how many things are on the agenda.
I don't think we've ever met every other week except during the summer. When I got on the board, and that was something Jim and Dwayne were in the habit of during the summers, every other week.
Yeah.
You know.
So, so, my only, my only thing was, I don't, I don't really think we can go to every other week when I see how many things are on the agenda. But by the same token, if we went every other week in the summer, we would be able to see if it works. But on the other side of the coin, in the summer, there's less to do perhaps.
Right, literally, you don't know if it works.
So we really won't know. So I'm happy to do whatever you.
Okay, so just keep it the same.
So basically, let, let Bob. Let Bob focus to Don, and Don says, look, there's only three things on, why don't we just kick them over to next week and go from there?
Okay. Um, the other thing that I could, would like to bring up is the, of the policy manual.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Markle gave me his, his backing, the slot in the policy manual. Two things. One, do we want to call it a policy and procedural manual? That's something to think about, if you like that title, or if you want a different title. Secondly, should we have the selectmen's names on the cover, or take them off, because those will change? And do we want those on the cover? Third, we want Mr. Markle's name on the cover? So those are the three things to think about, just in general. The next thing is that, that Mr. Markle gave me his corrections and, from computerized, and most of them were grammatical, or word changes, or capitalizations, and stuff like that, which were very helpful. Uh, and then he had four that were significant substantive changes. John gave me his, and he had maybe six or seven substantive ones, and then a couple that I could just accept because they, I said, how could I put that? And then yours, you gave me as we went along, and I put them in. We have the flag one that you gave me, and we have the social, some media thing.
Social media.
Social media.
Social media? Okay, so, which was, or two, two of them, social media and another one, which were accepted previously, and then by another board, in March, March of 19. So, when do we want, so we have to get together and discuss these ones. I can put them all, just take them all out and put them all on a list, and we can discuss each one individually. It should probably take, I don't think it should take more than a half hour, forty minutes, okay? So are we part of a regular meeting or not?
I think a regular meeting, like I said, we talked about, there's going to be those meetings where we don't have a really heavy agenda. Great opportunity to take care of it.
Okay, so we can do it on our next meeting, maybe if we can fit it in. If we can't, Mr. Markle, you will tell me, and I'll do it for the meeting after that. Or whatever, whenever one comes up.
Meeting after, I think, is our school committee one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And, what was the other thing I was going to tell you about that? Oh, and then what I will do is if you give me all your pages back, I will just reprint the whole thing, because it'll be too hard for me to print page here, page here, page here, and have you insert them. So if you just give me the whole thing, I'll reprint the whole thing.
They can email from you, I'll print copies for everybody.
Okay, you can do that.
Yeah. Oh, that other copy is here for you. The plan. Set the plan. Yeah, didn't you need a copy of that stuff? You asked about if I could copy that Septic Plan for you.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. I know what you're talking about. Okay, um, so, that's it, okay? Then we'll put that thing to rest, and we will, um, and then, oh, and the other thing is, I probably should put in a thing on adopt, adopt, um, what do you call it? When you change the thing, you call it, when I change this.
Amendments.
Amendments. But whatever they are. Okay, I, I should put a statement in how will you amend it? So that, so that there's an easy way to just put those in. Like maybe you put a whole page when there's only one, and you put a letter beside it or something. But I'll figure out a way to do that, so you don't have to really, have to update it every minute. That's it.
Can I go back to the, oh, you mentioned the policy, the policy manual, vacation, the policy manual, back to policy manual. There's one section in there, the one part in there that says that the Friday before Easter is a paid holiday. Because it's Good Friday, which I, I think it's wonderful to have Good Friday off. We're not open on Friday.
Well, actually, there's another place in, in the, this employee handbook, where it says, a holiday on a Saturday is, is Monday on a Friday.
Right, Friday, right.
We need to change that as well.
But some departments are open.
This goes back to when the town hall was open.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean, so we have to.
Well, or, we take it the other way.
We could say, or we could say.
Let's start going back to four days.
Five days, yeah.
We talked about that, and we're not getting things done, and we were going to like, that was only because of the closure in '05.
But that, but that might be part of the Collins study when it comes in and it says, I think you need more staffing or more hours.
Let's, let's wait for the Collins study before we.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have some Patrick's Day off.
No, no. Or Patriots Day. Town administrator report?
Okay, uh, the new hauling company, Mac de Marra, is operating, and actually did pick up today. All the boxes of the transfer station have been changed out, so.
How about the other?
So far, so good.
How about the senior center, the town hall?
Not yet, but that's going to be happening.
Police station.
It hasn't been done as of today. They just changed out the boxes. Uh, we did obviously reopen town hall for employees today. The plan is to open for the general public on the 20th. And then I have found out from Becky that the senior centers are really in phase four, so they're not going to be opening. Till the governor declares phase four, which is probably going to be a long time. And I think that makes sense, because that's a vulnerable population, and that's the way to do it. Uh, the new office in the former police lockup in this building is not only ready, it was occupied today by the town treasurer. Invite you to go back and take a look at it, it's a nice office. Also, we have the two new workstations in where the copier is. Uh, one will be a utility workstation, and one will be for the assistant treasurer. At this point, I had a discussion, the town clerk, about the treasurer's office, and her interest is in moving into that office. She's the clerk, and that's where we are.
Oh, before you go on to the next one, are we going to have to vote on the next one?
No. I mean, the receptions? No.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. No, it's just, you're just hiring a person.
Yeah, it's a part-time person. We're not, actually, you would vote, I guess, on hiring of a full-time, permanent person. This is not, at least at this point.
It's a temp.
This is a temp. Same way with the public health nurse, that's also a temporary appointment, at least until December 31st, and we'll see where we are, so.
Okay, the reason, the reason I say that is the individual who you hired is my sister.
Oh.
We're still thinking of hiring her anyhow.
Well, they don't look alike.
Okay, so, so, I, I need to recuse myself any time there's a discussion about that, or I can't sign the warrant that her name is on, and things like that, so I want to bring that to your attention.
This is a surprise to me, I can tell you that.
You can sign the warrant to pay her.
No, I don't think I can.
Because there have been many times that Jim had to sign the warrant when Pat was working here, same thing.
Well, I just want to.
Well, yeah.
So.
I should also make a statement in that case, that I did not know that. And no one recommended this person to me, and this person did. No, this person called up and said, I understand that you're trying to recruit a receptionist. I said, I'm doing some interviews, and I interviewed two people. Uh, the first person that I interviewed, I interviewed withdrew, because, uh, what I was told was that this person has elderly, over ninety, age ninety parents, and cannot make the time commitment. And so after the interview with, uh, this lady, uh, I think it makes sense to hire her. And I assume, again, that, that the way it typically works is that, uh, attempts that town administrator hires on permanent people or selectmen has to approve.
Oh, and there's one other thing I'd like to make clear, she's my older sister.
We're not lying here, I don't think. I'm not lying, so.
I didn't know she was.
Okay, uh, so, this will begin, I communicated to her after the interviews, and after I did hear from the other candidates that they were withdrawing. I did call up and say, uh, July 20th, and she's going to come a few days before that, the, it would be, it would be, uh, the, the week before. And we're going to do a little orientation or training. So when we open the doors on the 20th, it should, should work well, I hope. And we're going to, this is not, again, a permanent employee, employee, and we're going to be paying the wage from, uh, the COVID reimbursement money that the town has received from the Commonwealth. Uh, also, I spoke with Larry Tuttle, and we're now in the process of doing the bid documents and seeking bids for the Highway Garage project. So that's going to move forward. We'll probably have bids available, we're at a mid-July pre-bid conference, and, uh, by mid-August, certainly, we ought to be in the process of selecting a contractor.
And COVID really knocked us into a thing. We were hoping, you know, we'd be, the ground would be under construction right now, and.
We did advertise on the MMA website for a part-time public health nurse, it's also posted on the town website. I also advertised on the MMA website for a principal assessor. Today, I had a message from our principal, outgoing principal assessor asking me to post this on the town website, which I'll do tomorrow. Signed a time bond, scope of work proposal for him as for and the stormwater management plans regarding the garage and transfer station. Board of Health Subcommittee met us today, and, uh, actually Jane, I think, is on, and she can give you a full report on that. Jane?
Well, yes, hi. Um, I can tell you that we have the same amount of cases as last week with COVID, eighty-six. No new COVID cases since six twenty-eight, um, which is really good. Um, the difference you're going to see, I, I've heard a lot of people say it's different on the state list than it is what you're reporting at their meetings. Yes, it is. It's because on the state list, we have people from Chickaby on our list, we have people from North Hampton on our list. So the numbers vary a little bit, but we have eighty-six confirmed cases since the start of COVID in the town of Hampton.
And you cannot share how many active cases we have, right?
No. No. Um, we did get a health advisory today from the CDC. I asked Bob if he could please put it on our website, to check your hand sanitizers, make sure there's not methanol in them. That's a very toxic alcohol, so you have to be careful. Uh, hand sanitizer, so be careful with that. Um, we have one application for a public health nurse that will interview, and other than that, I think that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Uh, also, selectmen have suggested that we focus on a handful of issues for the coming months, and, uh, that we should create a special folder on our OneDrive, which I did, it's under so-called Focus. So, I'll be updating any developments, any, any documents and so forth in that folder. And that, Chairman, is, uh, that's the report. I would like to take the fourteenth to the sixteenth of July off.
What date is that?
I normally follow a WC Fields guideline, I go to Philadelphia where I won a first prize, which is a week in Philadelphia, second prize is two weeks in Philadelphia.
The last thing I think is a message from Senator Lesser, he's asking about, uh, what, uh, what our interest is in the budget.
Yes, I did send a commu, oh, and but I did send a communication to him probably four to six weeks ago, saying that if you're able to do any earmarks, I'm not kind of skeptical that that'll be happening, we'd like to have money for trees, for dead trees and hazardous trees.
The biggest thing they can do is get the budget done, so we will, everyone will know what they're supposed to do.
I don't think, I'm not expecting that we'll get a state budget, not before August or maybe early. But they do know what our priorities are, and that would be funding for removal of dead trees.
The other thing about the liaisons, um, I think that we ought to establish a reporting system for us. So if we have nine of them, two a week, and you, you know, so that, because otherwise, what happens a lot of times, I think, is when you have these liaisons, they know it, but they come to the meeting and they forget to say it, or it doesn't get around to it, or whatever.
Typically, it was on the agendas always at that time. However, some of these boards that meet once a month, you may not be reporting.
So then you just say, I have no reports tonight, but at least, at least we will have, look like we're organized. Or we may be organized.
I'd like to see a little more, if possible, you know, have the chief in every other month or something like that, you know.
Anything else to come before?
Uh, you did, I did get a message from Marcus, updating you on, uh, the radio project for the police and fire departments, and I sent it on, if you haven't seen it yet, it's an update.
Moving on.
I need, I need a couple of documents.
Yeah, they mentioned that you've been helping with a lot of things.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye.